Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've been doing this long enough that you would think that I would have called the meeting to order first, but I didn't, so the meeting's called to order. Thank you for joining us tonight for the September 15th, 2020 Post Falls City Council meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present, and tonight we do have two announcements. The annual Running Shoes and Microbrews 5K Run is Saturday, October 3rd at Kiwanis Park. For details about the race and how to register, visit the city's website, postfallsidaho.org. And I've received comments, emails, I know the council received an email today from someone, excuse me, who's making a case for not approving the Greens Ferry Bridge over the river. And I responded to this lady I happened to know where and informed her that that's not a City of Post Falls project. That is a Post Falls Highway District project. Post Falls Highway District is not under the Post Falls City umbrella. So if you get any comments, she was surprised, she appreciated the response, but she was not aware of that. Even though that article that was in the paper stated that, a lot of folks don't realize that the Post Falls Highway District is not part of the City of Post Falls. So if anyone's out there and planning on making your opinions known, please direct them to the Post Falls Highway District. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict or ex parte contacts or site visits? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the September 1st, 2020 City Council meeting. Item B is minutes from September 9th, 2020 City Council meeting. Item C is payables, August 25th through September 7th, 2020. Item D is public transit funding agreement with Cootney County for CityLink. Item E is Renley Estate subdivision construction improvement agreement. And item F is update to the easement for Shore Pines Lift Station. Item G is bid award for the Spokane Street and Prairie Avenue Improvement Project Phase 1. And item H is Gabriel Estate subdivision plat application.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
Al. On item D, Mr. Mayor, do you know anything more about the joint powers agreement for CityLink?
We've talked about it, and I don't think it is moving forward at this time. I've not heard anything that would support that. We talked about it, and I wasn't buying in from all the different agencies. Shelley, have you heard any update on that either?
No, the last meeting we had was probably about nine months ago. And as the mayor said, there wasn't, not everyone, including Cootney County, was not in favor of doing a joint powers agreement. They felt that it could be handled either through CAMPO overseeing it or through Cootney County continuing to oversee it.
The other question on that same item was, is the amount that's mentioned, $37,000, is that what we paid last year too?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct.
And I would mention, Al, kind of in response, I did talk with the City of Coeur d'Alene today, with Mayor Winmeyer, right before the meeting actually. And I asked him where they were on that contribution, and they cut theirs back significantly this year. So I think, you know, the transit center received COVID money, CARESAC funding, and that's why the city decided to do that. But I think that's something that we should bear in mind and remember as we go forward. And there's a couple others that I'll bring forward as we move on.
Great, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, would please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye, with the exception of item B, I'm staying because I wasn't there.
Anthony?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda tonight is public hearings, and we have none. Unfinished business, returning ordinances and resolutions, we have two. We have a resolution on record retention.
Move to approve the resolution, updates to the records retention schedule.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Item B is Tullmore Sports Complex, master plan, budget, timeline, and adoption.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Robbie Quinn, Parks Planner here today to present the Tullmore Sports Complex Master Plan for Adoption. On August 4th, 2020 Council Meeting, Mike Tarrell with MTLA presented the sports complex for adoption. And council asked staff to come back with a plan for financing the project and a timeline. So that's what I'm here to do tonight. Before we get into that, I just quickly want to go over the master plan as it was presented. So we plan on implementing five youth baseball fields, softball fields, one inclusive field with a restroom, concessions at the center, four multipurpose sports fields, two parking lots, a large center plaza, two playgrounds, three basketball courts, a skate dot, maintenance building, and on-street improvements for Cecil and Prairie. And so during that presentation, we also looked at a possible Phase 1, which would have been to develop three baseball fields, the center, concessions restroom, a parking lot, and the road frontage improvements. And so looking at the estimate that was given during the master plan for the entire sports complex, it came in at about 10.5 for the construction. The architecture and engineering was about 1.2. General conditions, mobilization permitting, about $500,000. And a 20% contingency of $2 million came out to about 14.4 for the entire project. And then when we looked at that a little more detail on Phase 1, we can see that the onsite improvements were just over $6 million. And the offsite, which again are the road frontage improvements, were about 1.2 to total at $7.3 million for Phase 1. And so before I get into how we kind of looked at the timeline, I just want to go over a few assumptions of how we really developed that. And so at this scale, you know, these aren't exact quotes or anything, they're budget estimates, and there's a lot of contingency built in. And so we looked at developing these timelines with two scenarios. The first was with our current impact fee structure, which was adopted at the August 18th Council Meeting. And then the second would be if we were to adopt the proposed park development impact fees. And then we utilized 30% of the yearly impact fee revenue for the development. And obviously, as you, I'm sure, have seen, this was developed over 10 to 20 years. So there's going to be other projects that are going to come about, other land that we're going to have to acquire. And so we used 30% to make sure we still had some room for other things. This is a, this conceptual budget was based on 2020 construction figures. And so that's why there's a lot of contingency as the years go, just to amount for inflation and some of that construction cost. This, it's generally just an example of how it could be developed. Obviously, there's, you know, probably 10 different ways of sequencing on how the site could develop. This was basically the most logic, logical approach that we came up with based on the master plan and the phasing. The estimate removed the mass grading, the synthetic turf. So the mass grading, there's an agreement with a previous developer to do that for us. So that was removed from the estimate. Synthetic turf was removed just because that's essentially kind of a bonus feature. It doesn't necessarily have to be in there as a base bid. And then reduce the construction cost of the buildings by 30% by allowing our construction division to manage that, those buildings. Phase 2 and Phase 3 designs are estimated at this point. Phase 1 is more specific, so we could really get a dialed-in design number. But Phase 2 and 3, we don't exactly know what those are going to be. So at this point, they're just estimates. And lastly, grants have not been factored in. We don't know, there's no way of knowing what grants we could get, so we didn't factor them in at all.
Robbie, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So on the construction, you've built in or assumed a 30% savings by having staff do the construction, is that net? So it's, if you go outside for a bid, it's going to be X number of dollars, staff will do it. Does that take into consideration staff time?
Generally, no. Because those hours are always budgeted for, but obviously, they wouldn't be able to work on another project because they would be here. And so in the council packet, there, it goes year by year. I'm not going to go through every year, but I just kind of want to take a minute to explain how it was set up before just going over the summary. And so the first category, we looked at revenue. And so again, that's purely impact fees. So this first scenario with the current impact fees, we use the projections that were in the Tischler by draft plan as far as units for the next 20 years. And so you can see with those numbers, we're projected for 2021 to produce $1.3 million in revenue. And so if we're only taking 30% of that, it's just over $400,000. And then we drop down to our next year expenses, which for 2021, we propose some design work essentially for the road frontage improvements and the mass grading for the complex. And so looking at the summary, we have a carryover number. So for next year, we're projected, our current balance is, as of 7/30, was 3.6 in impact fees. We're projected to spend 2.8 next year, which leaves $759,000. So that's essentially the carryover available. And then that plus the $400,000 in next year's 30% equals 1.1 million. We're only looking at spending 300, so our balance for carryover is 830. And essentially, it just continues down year by year. So just kind of summarizing what we're looking at. So if we look at the current impact fees, it's basically going to take us 20 years to develop the park. So next year, we look at road frontage improvement designs, followed by Phase 1 design. 2023, look at road frontage construction. And then basically, the next two years, we don't spend anything to build up some of these funds for Phase 1, which then goes into utilities construction, so all the underground electrical, water, sewer, those utilities. And then the following year, we'll look at the center, complex, restroom, concessions building. And again, wait two more years to build up funds before we construct our first three ball fields in 2030. And then the next year, go parking lot. So 2031 is really when we'll have three ball fields, restroom concessions, and a parking lot. We'll be able to use the site essentially at that point. And then we'll go into Phase 2 with, with design and building the shelter concessions. Following year, four soccer fields. And then after that, the parking lot. So 2034, we'll have the three ball fields, the four soccer fields, two, two buildings, and one parking lot. The next year, look at the second parking lot. And then following year, the finishing up the five baseball fields, so we'll construct the last two, wait another year to build up funds, finish the complex baseball portion, so that would include all the batting cages, the, I'll finish the landscaping, the inclusive field and that sort of thing. And then 2038, Phase 3 design, and then the next two years, finishing up with the larger playground, the plaza, basketball, skate dot, and maintenance building. And so just kind of look at it from a timeline perspective, obviously, you can't read this, but it kind of shows, spread out as far as phasing. So this first category is Phase 1, which is basically 10 years, a year and a half for design, and then the remainder, construction. Phase 2 jumps down to about five years, one year for design, and then following, two and a half years for Phase 3. And so the next, the next scenario we looked at was if we were to adopt the proposed impact fees, what would that look like? So essentially, as you can see, it basically cuts our development schedule in half. So now we're doing it in 11 years versus 20. Same sequencing, but we're able to do multiple things per year. And as you can see, we reduced the amount of time that we'll need it to build up funds. And another thing to note that I didn't mention on the last one, over the 20 years, they're projected to spend about $14.4 million. Doing it earlier obviously reduces the amount of contingency and inflation we have to factor for. So it's reduced to about $12.7 million. And again, looking at it with the timeline, we'll basically have a Phase 1 in five years, Phase 2 another four years after that, Phase 3 two more years. And so just to kind of summarize, you know, there's an approach that we can make, you know, different ways. But basically, either way, if we, if the impact fee gets adopted or if it doesn't, you know, it could take anywhere from 11 to 20 years for the design and construction of the site. Obviously, if we do end up getting grants, that could be expedited. Or some of the other elements, such as the synthetic turf, could come back into play, that sort of thing. And so again, I'm here seeking adoption of the master plan and your recommendation to proceed with our Phase 1 construction documents, which we would then go back to MTLA for proposal, which would come back to council at a later date.
Questions for Robbie?
I just, it's more of a comment. When I'm looking at the budget, a lot of it is for the street improvements. And I'm just questioning why the developer, that street would be done way before we start on the park. That, you know, maybe the developer should maybe be responsible for more of the street improvements because those lots across from the park will be at a premium. He'll sell those for more than he would any other lots in the park. Another question is on Prairie. To me, that doesn't seem like, that should be the park's sole responsibility too, because Prairie is one of the main arterials. And I'm just wondering why we're not using the impact fees for that or franchise, or why that's not coming out of our street improvement fund on that.
So the street improvement fund has specific projects within it, which would not include that project right now. That project may or may not be taken out on the impact fee. But typically, the developer of the project is responsible for the midline of the street plus 10 feet. Is Bob here somewhere? And so that's what the park's being held to. So he isn't making improvements to the developer's part. The developers will make their improvements on their half of the street.
Yeah, it's, and I'm not comparing this, but my prior life, all of our money always just went into the park itself. We never paid for street improvements, we paid for parking, park amenities, and it seems like...
So it's easier to do it as one project than it is to have engineering do the streets separate from the park. It's less expensive, the timing comes out in the best way for it, so that you're doing it all at one time.
Yeah.
So...
I'm just letting you know, we could put a lot of amenities in that park for what we're paying.
It's all city money. So whether we take it out of the park's budget, or we take it out of the street's budget, or we take it out of engineering budget, it comes out of impact fees or general fund, one of the two. So the bucket of money is all the same.
Okay.
And the total cost of the city is the same. It's how do you make it to where it's the most efficient? And so that's why we have it. And Bob and I talked about maybe coming forward and explaining this a little better because I know that Council Wolf also had a similar question.
Yeah, because that's what I was thinking, street impact fees, seems like it would go for the street. Park impact fees would go for the amenities in the park, so that was my main question on that, so. I'm just looking at, you could do a lot, it seems like we could speed the park up, do more amenities if we weren't responsible for the street improvements on it, not the parks, so. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, and another thing to note, at the time when this was, the estimates were developed, we didn't know who was going to go first with the Cecil Road. And so ours was bid as if we were going first. So we would be required to put in our section plus 10, plus the water. Whereas now, the other developer is actually in construction right now. So they're going to end up taking some of that utility cost by putting the water line in first and doing 10 feet on our property. So ultimately, our costs for the road construction will go down from, from what's in here. But again, at that, at the time this was developed, we didn't know that.
Lynn, comments?
No, I'm, I'm good with it.
Linda?
No, I'm, I'm good with it as well.
Joe?
While we were, we were coming up with this timeline, we were also considering all the other park projects, Black Bay being the biggest one by a long shot. But is the remaining 70% going to keep all those things on schedule as well?
Yeah, so that's, that's essentially why we, we looked at the 30%. I know Dave and I have talked a little bit about how much, you know, what percentage will go to Black Bay. Obviously, these two projects are going to be our big projects over the next 10 years. But one thing to look at, you know, we're in the CD phase of Black Bay right now. And so Phase 1, which we're looking at about 1.5 million. When we originally thought about Phase 1, it was 5 million. And so as we get into more detail, things get dialed in, and we can kind of hone in on some of these budgets and what, what we really want in the parks. So when we're just talking about master plan, the, the cost estimates are going to be up here. And essentially, as more detail, hopefully, those kind of shrink and become more precise. But that's just something that, you know, Black Bay, I think the estimate was 14 million, but that doesn't mean we're going to end up spending 14 million there either.
Yeah, I figured that was the answer. I just wanted to make sure for the record that 30 million wasn't just pulled out of somebody's, or 30%, I mean.
Al.
Robbie, first of all, thanks so much for putting all this together. This is great stuff, and I really appreciate it because this is what I needed last time to kind of get an idea. I guess my biggest heartburn is about the time it takes to get it all done. And, you know, I guess, you know, this, this is a much better plan, but we haven't approved those, the increase in the impact fees. The only other question I had on the plan is, why would we build the restroom and the concession stand before we did anything else?
Basically, because all the utilities are going to that point, and it's the center of the ball field. And so if we get that done, then it's kind of easier to go out.
I guess what I, when I add this all up, I mean, we're going to, we're going to spend $6 million and wait 12 years before we can do anything on that park.
Yeah.
That's my biggest concern.
Yeah, that's another thing we've talked about as well. Maybe we end up doing the soccer field, soccer fields first, just because they're a much lower cost, and we can get the, get the site generating some money for us as well before we go into actually developing some of the baseball fields. You know, because the four soccer fields, I think, were around $500,000 or $600,000 to develop those. Obviously, the utilities and all that would still need to go in, which is a big chunk of money. So that puts us out still a couple of years, but, but it'll make the site usable sooner.
Another question, has Park and, Park and Rec Commission, have they signed off on this timeline and?
So they haven't...
Black Bay and everything?
They, they signed off, I guess, on the master plan adoption. They have not signed off on the timeline yet. Basically, that was just, this has been developed since our last meeting, and we haven't had a Park and Rec meeting since then. It's something that I will review with them at our next meeting, next week.
I guess where I'm coming from is that Black Bay Park can still be used as a park. It's still a park, it still can be used while we're slowly developing. I mean, we're going to drop $6 million and not have anything on this complex. I'm just like, I'm thinking, why wouldn't we turn that around and fast-track this so we can get to something that's usable while Black Bay Park is still usable? You see what I'm saying there? Go, you know, 10% on Black Bay and 50% on, on this project. The other thing is, is there any way to get a bond or something so we can build this faster? The biggest, my biggest heartburn is 20-some years before we can really have what we want.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, Dave wants to speak to the bond a little more, but I think that, that would be an option.
Mayor, council, before I answer your question, Councilman Wolf, Councilman Wolf, you asked about the Black Bay and our percentages. Just so you have an idea, some of the things that are on the radar screen. We looked at the two big projects, 30-30, we still have to obtain land. And we do have a dog park we're working, still trying to get, there's disc golf that, so a lot of things in there. It's expensive. And yes, a bond could be done, that's the super majority. We have to package it to a point where the public is willing to take that indebtedness. It's, you know, and you pick and choose what, what you think can work. We have not approached Little League to see what percentage they might be willing to put in or any other sports association, whether it's, you know, one of the soccer ones. But those are all, all possibilities.
Well, I'm pretty familiar with Little League, and, I mean, they're talking thousands, not millions. I mean, if they kick in anything, it's pretty much the same.
You can say, "I can't."
You're going to have to get more TV rights.
Yeah. I, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I think this is just a little bit premature because we haven't changed the impact fees maybe to go to this plan. I guess I'm still not really in favor of this because if we sign off on this today, we're looking at, again, 20 years. And the first six, or first 12, we have nothing except just a, like, that pit out there just sucking money, $6 million, and we don't even have a baseball field yet. Sure? I need to find a way to make it go faster.
Any comments?
Yeah, I have one, when you're looking at the timing. As Alan had pointed out, and you talked about perhaps switching soccer fields for the ball fields. Whether they're soccer or ball fields, that won't happen until 2025. And then in 2026, parking lot one construction begins. So you would have ball fields or soccer fields without parking?
So how we, I was kind of looking at that was basically, the construction of the soccer would kind of close at the fall. And then when our fiscal cycle starts again, and, I mean, impact fees is kind of just flowing, so it's not necessarily broken up by a year. But then we'd start the parking lot construction just soon after that, either in the fall or early spring. And obviously, the, the lawn for the fields will take some time to germinate and harden as well. So that gives us some time to build the parking lot.
Yeah, that's the key, is that if they build the park, if they build the ball fields in 2030, you can't play on them until the next year at best.
That's correct. And actually, ideally, you'd like to allow it to have two growing seasons. And it's, it's kind of like you take a road and then you put a new road in, then they chip seal it, and they get some of that extra amount of years. It's the same thing. If we go too soon, we're back in, say, 15 years renovating the field. If you go that extra season, you actually gain like about another seven to 10 years. So it's, it's in timing.
Right.
So nobody will be playing ball anyways on, whether it's soccer or ball fields, until '26 or '27?
Or 2030, if we don't pass the impact fees, that's...
That's true.
The one you're looking at there is the one, if we change the impact fees.
Well, let me comment. So we authorized staff to go out for a master plan on this park. We spent the money for the plan, we've got the plan. Al, you had very legitimate concerns on how to find it. They've shown us a couple options. Councilor Anthony made the comment, when we previously discussed this, that staff cannot go out for grants to help pay for any of this unless they have a plan.
Right.
My, my position is this, we have the one plan that takes way too long, and that's based on current impact fees. We've got another plan that would expedite that, still takes a long time. I think you've heard staff say there's the option of possibly switching baseball fields and soccer fields. I think there's some flexibility there. I think this answers the initial question, is how are we going to pay for it? Now, we don't like the timing, it's going to take a long time, but it does show that there is a plan out there that would pay for it. I agree with you. Why are we spending money now if it's going to take six years before we can, or longer, before we can utilize the field? However, I think we've, we authorized them to get the master plan, they've got the master plan, they've identified everything that's going to go into the park, they've come up with a budget, although it, although it may be a longer budget or timeframe than we like. I think by approving this, we would, we would then allow them to start tweaking the details to try to, to make it more time-sensitive, if you will. It will allow us the opportunity to see what happens on the impact fees because I printed off the two different versions, just for the first couple of years, on the impact fees with now and as they may be, and it may be somewhere in between there. You know, because we don't have to approve what the increase in impact fees is, we could do something in between. But I think we need to get it... But I think we need to get it moving forward by approving this master plan. We're not telling them to go out and spend the money. But we do have a plan in place. We have the opportunity to now try to pick up grant funding and we know that there is a timeframe coming down the road. I think we can approve that timeframe. I think it just depends on what impact fees do or what we do as a council to approve those impact fees. I'm not opposed to your idea either, Al, of maybe we swap it between Black Bay and this. And I don't think staff would be prohibited from bringing that option back to us. I just hate to authorize them to go out and get a master plan, get everything put together, identify the needs, and then hang it up over timing, et cetera. And again, legitimate concerns, I'm not being critical, I think that's legitimate. But I think we need to get the plan approved. Let's give the staff the tools that they need to try to move this thing forward and hopefully come up with ways to save money and expedite the program.
But if we approve this plan, then we are giving them license to go out and spend this money in this, are we not?
No, we're not. No, we're approving the plan, but Dave, come on up.
This plan, the next steps coming back to you would be if we'll enter, we'll talk to the architects, see if we can come to an agreement with the development. That would finite that phase, but really the next phase coming back would be the grading side of it. The mass grading, which we want to catch before that developer is totally done with that area. Whether we go with a smaller concept, we go with the fields. It may take longer. You may decide that we're only going to put in half of the park and the rest stays undeveloped. That's future decisions, but it's not giving us a open checkbook to do the whole park.
And you're going to have to bring back contracts, are you not?
Well, everything but each phase of the design has, the next phase of the design will be approved by council. It'll be approved, not just the contract for what it's going to cost to have them do that construction documents. It's, the final part of it will come back to you guys. So each segment you have, you have a say in it. And future councils may decide that they don't want to add the last two ball fields or whatever.
Linda.
Dave, the action item states Tulamore Sports Complex Master Plan Budget Timeline and Adoption. That's, so if we're approving the timeline, well, are we not approving either we raise the impact fees and the shorter timeline or we don't and the longer timeline? One of these timelines looks like.
That's not, that would not be done tonight. The impact fees have been, the city's been working on them through Plan Department for a number of years now and they haven't made it forward and they're going to take another look at them.
No, you're misunderstanding me. It is, that is what the action item is stating. So what, and I think that's, might be what Counselor Wolf is referring to is if we bring this action item forward, are we not stating that the master plan budget timeline is adopted? Can we not just adopt the Sports Complex Master Plan and leave it at that? And if so, I would make that motion.
Can I ask a question, Linda? Mr. Wilson, is that?
Right here.
Yeah, I was curious why you were over there.
I thought you just didn't like me.
These dividers are fun.
So the question is, what came to us three weeks, two weeks, a month ago? Was the adoption of the master plan. And staff was directed to bring us back timelines, funding, et cetera. And as Council President Wilhelm says, the action item is to prove the master plan budget timeline and adoption. Can we not just approve the adoption of the master plan?
Sure, you can approve the master plan. You can adopt the master plan at this point. My recollection of the discussion a couple of weeks ago was we wanted to have an understanding of how this thing would be financed or paid for over the next whatever period of time. To me, that piece of what you've heard tonight is more explanatory. How do we get from A to B? You're not tying yourself into any particular timeline. That's just how, based on the resources in one of two scenarios, we would get that done. Really what you're adopting is the master plan.
So we're not tying ourselves into any particular, a specific timeframe?
No.
We're not tying ourselves into a specific cost at this point?
You're adopting the master plan at this point.
Al, does that provide you any?
Not really. No, because, I mean, this is what we're approving. I mean, this is the best-case scenario. What Robbie laid out for us today was, you know, with the, making the cuts and everything, this is, this is what we could, we're going to look forward to. Unless something changes that we don't, you know, with impact fees change or something else changes down the road. If nothing changes, this is what, this is the best case we're going to have.
It has to all be, it has to all be examples because the rate of growth and how many permits you're going to do every year is going to be fluid too. They're not going to be exactly like they are year after year during this. So I don't, I don't, I don't see us approving this timeline. I do believe, and my motion stands, to move to approve the adoption of the Tulamore Sports Complex Master Plan.
And I would second that.
Motion to second for the discussion.
You like to ask, go ahead, Al. I'm like you, I'd like to see it done in three or four years, but I think we got to start somewhere. You know, we could keep putting off an adoption, adoption of the plan, but at least we've got to start somewhere and then give staff the flexibility to go out and, you know, they might come back and propose a bond to us, which will be our decision. But at least give them the options to come back to us with some funding ideas on that. And if they can speed it up, all the better, but we got to start somewhere.
Why couldn't we hold off until we've approved the impact fees? I mean, that's a, this is a more realistic plan. It doesn't, it just tables this decision until such time as we've made that decision. I'd feel much more comfortable approving the plan, knowing that we can build it in 10 years or less versus approving something today that's 20 years. I've said my piece.
Yeah, I guess so. If we don't adopt the impact fees, we're still going to build the park at some point, you know, so it.
Maybe. Or we might just move a bunch of dirt and leave it. It could sit there for 30 years.
I guess my thought is we have to start somewhere. Then the onus is on us. If we want it sooner, then we got to improve the impact fees. That's on us.
Joe.
I guess I don't see where there's an issue of having two different timelines included as addendums or estimates in the plan too, because then at least it shows that if anybody who's looking at the plan wants to know how we're going to pay for it, what the timeline might be and stuff, everybody knows that, nobody has a crystal ball. We don't know how many impact fees we're going to take in. We don't know if the fee schedules are going to change. They might change again in 20 years or 10 years even. So these are obviously just kind of, I don't want to go so far as to say wild predictions, but.
Rough estimates?
Rough estimates, there we go, thank you. So, and having an option A, option B, and either one of them is maybe. At least there's some thought in there and some phasing and some process in there that I think is valuable, whether it actually comes to fruition exactly as those are laid out or not.
Well, we have a motion to second. Please shake your roll.
Malloy?
So the motion is not going to include these two timelines?
Motion is just to adopt the master plan itself.
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Motion passes, thank you. So again, Robbie thinks that's good information and, you know, we obviously hope that it's not going to take 20 years to build out. But as we get more specific information, as we follow up on impact fees, et cetera, at least the master plan itself is approved. And if you're aware of any grants, start looking for them.
Yep. Thank you.
Yes, Joe.
I'd like to make a second motion that as part of the master plan, we would include both of these timelines as an addendum. Clearly marked that these are rough estimates of potential timelines and budgets for the master plan.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thanks, Joe. Good discussion. Next item up tonight is new business. We have none, followed by administrative staff reports.
We have none.
We have none. Citizens' issues. Anyone wishing to address the council on a non-agenda-related item? And I didn't even ask, are we zooming tonight?
No.
Okay, so that would be none. Mayor and council comments. You know, I would just like to say I appreciate, whether you believe in them or not, I appreciate the folks wearing the masks. I follow the numbers daily and I'm beginning to think that the numbers haven't changed. So for the last three or four days, the table in the Coeur d'Alene Press has said 13 new cases. Same number hospitalized, same number in critical care. So I don't know if they've updated those or not, but if we see, as we have seen, it's been, you know, we're running 30, 40, 50 at times, down to 11, 12, 13. So hopefully that number continues to decrease so we can follow up. And Counselor Wolf asked a question and about panhandle health and a mask mandate. And I've not spoken with them, Al, but I will. I'll reach out and see what their plan is. But, you know, again, it's something we're all in and we got to respect everybody else's positions and health. So again, thank you for those who are wearing the masks and hopefully we get through this sooner rather than later. And it was very frustrating to go out and mow my lawn last night for a short period of time with a mask on, only to come in and have my wife tell me that unless it's the N95, it really didn't do you any good with the smoke. But the smoke obviously has been horrible. Hopefully we get through that as well. And I would, I would ask that we keep all those who have suffered from loss of home, those who are fighting the fires in our thoughts and prayers because it's a dangerous situation and, you know, they can use all support they can get. So, council comments. Seeing none. We do need an executive session?
We do.
Motion would be?
I would move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74 DAS 2061F to communicate with legal counsel for public agency to discuss legal ramifications and of legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but intimately likely to be litigated, that no action will be taken and that the session should last about?
15 minutes.
15 minutes.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf? Wilhelm, sorry.
Aye.
Motion passes. Enter executive. Counsel, please bring your masks. Please bring your masks as we are heading into a smaller area.